We're expecting Steve.
Yeah, you do.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks for being with us today. Today is Tuesday, April the 14th. This is a special meeting of the Prescott City Council and it's Budget Workshop Number Three. That said, Greg will lead us in the pledge.
Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance is to the highest standing in the republic, to which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and created in the firstborn, and has been.
Roll call.
Mayor Kirkendorf?
Here.
Mayor Protam Kuknia?
Here.
Councilman Arnold?
Here.
Councilman Blair? We'll be here shortly. Councilman Lamerson?
Here.
Councilman Lozelle?
Here.
Councilwoman Wilcox?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay. Before we start our discussion items, Elizabeth Ruffner brought me a one-pager this morning. Thursday, May 4th, 1995, the Prescott Daily Courier was written by Bud Ruffner, her husband, and it was headlined "When Drunks Voted: Arizona Elected Quality People."[96.11][96.11](Laughter). Those of you that can go back and read this, it's interesting. And there's more substance there than even what the headlines denote, so my important thing of the day. Let's go ahead and go to discussion items.
Item 1A, "Presentation by Siegel Waters Consulting of Personnel Classification and Compensation Study Findings and Recommendations."
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning, Mary.
Early one, everybody awake?
Yeah.
Okay. As a result of the employee compensation study you approved last fall, today Andrew Knudsen, the city's project manager from Siegel Waters Consulting, will be presenting findings and recommendations to you concerning that study. Mr. Knudsen has been working in the employee classification and compensation field since 1998, with most of that time being in the public sector. Mr. Knudsen has two bachelor's degrees and a master's in human resources and industrial relations from the Carlson School of Management at the University of Minnesota. He is a Certified Compensation Professional and is one test away from completing the Certified Employee Benefits Professional Designation. Today, Mr. Knudsen will go through the methodology used to evaluate the city's current benefits, including employee focus group results, market survey, and comparison wage analysis. Those findings, and finally preliminary recommendations, to council which may evolve depending on council's direction and, of course, FY '16 budget parameters. Before we start, I'd like to thank Mark Woodfield, as he's been a tremendous help in putting numbers to some of these initial recommendations. With that, I'd like to introduce Mr. Knudsen.
Thank you, Mary, and good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning to you. And before we start, how do you prefer, if the council has questions, do you prefer they come as they're appropriate, or would you rather we wait until your presentation is over?
If you have questions, as we go, that's fine. We can do it that way. And then we'll also have some more time at the end for questions.
Okay. Everybody?
So feel free. It's not going to stand. Okay. So the outline, the presentation outline, as you have in front of you and on the screen, we're going to be covering benefits, compensation philosophy, methodology, compensation, and some overall recommendations. Now, I have quite a bit to get through, so I'm going to move pretty quickly, but if you do have questions, please go ahead and ask them. So we started the project with two days of employee focus groups to gather employee opinion on pay and benefits. Approximately 130 individuals from the city participated. In addition to this, the city sent out a survey to all employees, asking questions about preferences regarding pay and benefits as well. And on the next slide here, we have some of the significant results from those focus groups, as well as the city survey. The overwhelming result is this first one in red, and that's 94.33 percent, or 333 out of 353 responses said that they would use vision coverage if available. So that would be reinstating that would be one of the primary objectives. At the end, we have some rough numbers to attach to this. Some of the other...
Excuse me, sir.
Yes?
So out of our 506 employees, only 130 responded?
No. There were 353 responses.
Okay.
Yeah. The 130 refers to the focus groups.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Some of the other results here are 73 percent would use tuition reimbursement, almost 64 percent said that they were not satisfied with paid time off accrual caps, about 55 percent said that they were not satisfied with the amount accrued per pay period, almost 71 percent said that they would not rather work for an employer that provides excellent benefits, even if their pay was below average. And then tied to that question is this last one. Almost 61 percent said that increasing salary is more important than improving benefits.
Is that a unusual response?
It's not unusual. It typically, there's one thing that's, one observation that I would make, and that's that a younger workforce typically prefers pay over more generous benefits. An older workforce typically sees the benefits and the retirement and things like that as being more important. So it's not, you know, it kind of depends on the demographics of the workforce, but no, it's not unusual.
Okay. We have been struggling to make sure that our benefit packages have been funded and
Yes.
and kept up, but are we chasing the wrong horse?
Well, we'll get to that when we, I'll show you some numbers regarding benefits. I have some information coming up on some future slides regarding that, okay?
Do you have information on the number of employees who have spouses with benefits that might affect this answer?
You guys probably do, right? I mean, I don't know if they have it right now, but we do have that, I'm sure the city has that information. I don't have it in front of me.
Okay.
Yeah. A word about compensation philosophy. A compensation philosophy is really just a formal statement that documents an organization's position about employee compensation. And employers can benefit from being transparent about their compensation philosophy and actually having an official pay strategy. Now, the city of Prescott does have an effective philosophy in its stated blow with these three bullet points. It is, and I'll read them real quick. "It is the policy of the city of Prescott to pay its employees at prevailing wages for paid for similar occupations in selected Arizona public sector organizations. The purpose of this plan is to attract, retain, and motivate employees through financial compensation commensurate with the employee's performance, responsibility, and contribution towards city goals. An affordable, market-oriented pay system that keeps city pay ranges externally competitive while preserving internal equity will be maintained through periodic review and adjustment." That's a typical compensation philosophy statement that we see. We think it's a good one.
Questions?
Yes.
Can you explain to me, and maybe, maybe, Mary can, what periodic review and adjustment means? Does that mean every 10 years? Does that mean every two years? What does that term periodic mean?
It's whatever, typically, we review after the first compensation, or the last compensation review, which was in 2001, we reviewed a third of the jobs every year after that until we stopped giving increases during the economy. But we were reviewing portions of each overall group of positions every year, so it wasn't so monumental.
Right. So you're doing, that is what you're calling periodic adjustment throughout the system?
That's what the city practice was.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, I want to get into the methodology quickly about the study and talk a little bit about benchmarking. Now, what benchmarking does is it takes a sample of common jobs that you'll find in other organizations, it compares them to other peer organizations to assess competitiveness of pay and/or benefits. And it's a way to define reference points for making comparisons. Benchmarking has been standard practice in the industry for decades. Again, we look for jobs that are common to other organizations, jobs that represent the variety of job families in the city, as well as the variety of pay grades in the city. Now, we write benchmark summaries for our custom peer survey, and city departments reviewed those benchmark positions for accuracy before sending out the custom survey to organizations. An example, benchmark accountant position. An accountant will be linked to the job family. You'll see these other jobs, budget analyst, privileged tax auditor, privileged tax supervisor, senior accountant, senior budget analyst. Now, 14 public sector peer organizations were used for the custom survey, and then I also used three published sources to represent the private sector. These were the peers that participated in the study, the 14 public sector organizations. And then at the bottom, you'll see the published sources, which we utilize in most of our, in fact, all of our Arizona studies, and except for the Milliman study, we always use the Economic Research Institute and Towers Watson as well for private sector data. This here is an example of a detailed market data sheet. Now, what this, there's a lot of information here, but I want to kind of walk you through this so you, excuse me, you understand kind of the methodology and the process. This benchmark job is an accounting clerk in tax. The first group of numbers, if you look to the left, under respondent, you'll see custom survey data sources. Those were the public sector peers that responded to this benchmark. And then as you look over to the right, those were the numbers, the pay range minimum, the pay range midpoint, pay range maximum. Now, if you go down just a little bit, you'll see the city of Prescott's pay range for that benchmark, and then a comparison to the market average. So about halfway down, where you see that 101 percent, 103 percent, and 104 percent in black, that's where the city of Prescott stands in comparison to the market, the public sector market for this benchmark. That means anything over 100 percent means that it's slightly above market, okay? As we move down and we look at the published data sources, you'll see ERI on the left, Milliman, and Towers Watson. And we looked at accounting clerks. We have the data to the right, and then you'll see some numbers in blue, 108, 107, and 107. Anything that's above 105 percent of the market, we consider more generous than the market. In other words, our parameters that we typically use for our studies is that anything between 95 percent and 105 percent of the market, we consider to be competitive with the market. Anything above 105 percent is considered above market. Now, the gray at the bottom, the three rows at the bottom, that's comparing all the data together, the public peers, as well as the published sources. And you'll see that you're at 104, 105, and 105, which is very competitive for this particular benchmark. Now, we have these data sheets on every single benchmark conducted for the study. Can't go through them all today because, you know, it's just too time-consuming, but we do have, these sheets will all appear as an appendix in the final report.
When is the final report?
Final report comes after this meeting. Sometimes some issues or questions comes up in these types of meetings that we will have to do some further investigation. I know that, you know, we'll have to work with finance to come up with some more specific numbers on options, but generally speaking, a couple of weeks after this meeting.
Thank you.
Back to, now to total comp methodology. This study did not just look at pay, but we also looked at benefits. Okay? We looked at all benefits. Now, to determine total comp costs for each peer city, we looked at the sum of factors below for each benchmark. You take the calculated midpoint of the base salary range, so the midpoint between minimum and maximum of each salary range for each benchmark position. You look at total employer costs for all health-related benefits, and you use the, what we do is we use the most populated medical plan. We look at prescription drug, dental, vision premiums, weighted by Prescott's current enrollment distribution among coverage tiers in the city's comparable medical plan, and then the current actual cost associated with the defined benefit retirement plan. I will show you an example coming up in the slides of what this looks like, of what the total comp calculations look like. This is an example of three benchmarks, the total comp calculation. So again, there's a lot of information on this page, and this page, this type of calculation is done for every position in the study, every benchmark that was in the study. So we're looking at accounting clerk tax, we're looking at administrative assistant, and we're looking at administrative specialist. If we take the first one, benchmark ID number one, move to the right, we have Prescott, the midpoint $38,074 as the calculated midpoint, the weighted total health cost, $8,704, total retirement benefits, $4,371, for a total comp cost of $51,149. The market, you'll see, is right below that. Now, again, that's the market for this particular benchmark job. And then what we do is we calculate Prescott as a percentage of that market. For that particular benchmark, the, at the midpoint, again, it's at 105 percent of the market, at the health cost is 93 percent of the market. So again, anything below 95 percent will show up in red, and that will indicate slightly less competitive than the marketplace. Now, total retirement benefits, you'll see, is at 105 percent, very competitive. Total comp costs overall, 103 percent, very competitive, but it kind of gives you a snapshot of where you are by benchmark. So we have this for every benchmark. We also have the Excel spreadsheets that indicate, that show how we calculated everything and so on, and those are, become property of the city as well. Yes, yes, sir?
The 93 percent on down on the weighted cost of total health cost, is that 93 percent lower than most, you know, marketer or municipalities that are paying those costs, or is it 7 percent more that the employee or employee, employee is paying?
It is not 93 percent lower at all.
Well, not lower, but that being 100 is a baseline, but...
Yeah, so it would be, it would be, if 100 is what we consider, you know, competitive and at market, it would be 7 percent below that.
That the city is paying, contributing into those benefits?
Into the various benefits, that's right. That's correct.
Thank you.
Now, I want to show some total comp summary for the general employees. This considers, this graph, this chart here at the bottom considers all benchmarks, everything combined together. Prescott, Prescott's pay range midpoint is 98 percent of the market average overall across all benchmarks, okay, so we consider that competitive. City's weighted total health cost across all general employee benchmarks is 93 percent, again, of the market average, which we just discussed, yes?
I've got a question. In rating or evaluating, you're using a health cost. Is there a correlation between the health cost and the quality of the benefit? So from an employee's standpoint, if someone's explaining to me my total compensation package and the employer says, "Well, we're paying $7,000 for health coverage for you," the employee might say, "Yeah, but my friend who works down in the valley for a city has much better benefits for that, for a similar cost." So isn't, isn't quality of healthcare benefit as important as the cost of providing it, or more important?
That's a good question. What we do is, we do not get into that kind of detailed analysis, but we look at the total cost, and we do have breakout by, you know, prescription drug, dental, et cetera, that go into these overall total health costs, but that specific comparison is, we're not at that kind of detail.
Right. Well, for our area here, for the other members of the Yavapai Combined Trust, the issue is moot, but I was just bringing the question up that we're evaluating costs here, but from the employee's perspective, it's about the quality of the benefit itself.
I think too, we bring 506 customers to an insurer, and then in Yavapai Combined Trust, it's even more. Are we getting a better rate because of that than opposed to say, because we have so many different businesses under the hood of the city?
Yeah.
Where if you took, you know, I have 83 employees.
Yeah.
I'd be paying a lot more for the same benefits, so...
Yeah. That's correct. You're, I mean, you generally get a better deal when you're in a larger pool, generally speaking, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep. Yes? I have public safety separate, and we'll get to there, okay? Public safety's coming up next. Now, we have these same calculations for our fire benchmarks. Here is an example, okay, of, we have battalion chief, fire captain, firefighter. We also had the fire chief as a benchmark. We look at the Prescott midpoint, which is slightly lower. I'm on battalion chief, first benchmark. It's 95 percent of the market average midpoint. We still consider that competitive. The weighted total health cost, again, 93 percent. That will remain consistent through all employee classifications. Here's where it gets real interesting. Your total retirement benefits are way above market. So you are, for at the battalion chief level, putting in $52,710, whereas the market is putting in $25,620. So that, that is 206 percent of market.
Andrew, question there.
Yes, sir.
This may be more directed at the city manager. This is based upon a contribution rate of 59.66 percent, which contains a 37 percent contribution to the unfunded liability.
Yeah.
From fiscal year '15. So what I'd like to understand from your chart here, because we're looking at total comp costs, and ultimately, some recommendation about a pay plan in the future, how can we take into consideration what I consider to be a heavily skewed retirement cost because of this unfunded liability, and put it into our total comp costs of an individual's pay program?
We can certainly recalculate and take out the unfunded, if you'd like.
I think it's a, it's a difficult question that I need to see what the actual benefit being paid to the employee or to the retirement system for the employee. We can't control the fact that the retirement system is giving cost of living increases to existing retirees.
Yeah.
But what we can control is what we are paying that employee. And so I'd like to see that when we're actually taking these numbers into consideration, because I see our total comp cost is 117 percent, but I believe that's heavily skewed out of that retirement benefit.
It is, absolutely. Now, we do have the numbers and the calculations behind all this that will appear in the report, but we certainly can show you what it would look like with the unfunded take. Yes, sir?
Also, let me add on Charlie there. For other municipalities of this market average, that those are Arizona city markets and not a private, published.
That's correct.
Because it's apples for apples here, and if, I don't know if you have this data, but I wouldn't want, you know, our numbers to be compared to another municipality that's not taking into account for the unfunded. I'd like it, the same playing field, so we're not looking at the unfunded, but raw benefits.
Yes, we may need to pull that out.
Can you just add another column?
Yeah.
You know, I want to see, I want to see what's real, but I want to see also the other side of that.
Okay.
So if you just add another column to the table, so we can see the actual cost, because that is a skewed number, and that's wrong for us to believe that our employees are getting compensated like that.
And Greg, to your point, looking in the surveyed peers and published sources, you know, I think arguably several of these municipalities are growing, so they're adding more employees, they're pushing down their unfunded, they can spread it out, because I assume in the market number, anybody that has an unfunded liability, which is everybody, it's being accounted for, but ours is somewhat unique because we have more retirees than we do people paying in.
Well, I guess the point I was going to make, and I think it's been made perhaps a little bit different way, is that the fire, public safety, personnel, retirement system, the fire part of that is a defined benefit that's uniform over the state. So to me, it's not meaningful from a competitiveness standpoint. It is very meaningful from being able to afford it, and that's what we're struggling with. But I don't, I don't, I don't, I can't imagine having a conversation with a fire, with a firefighter who's contemplating, you know, going somewhere else and having a job, and saying, "Well, gee, we're paying 206 percent here." I mean, that's meaningless because they're going to get the same benefit at another jurisdiction. So I think, I think for looking at compensation and competitiveness, we pull this out of there. This is a matter of being able to afford, not a matter of the quality of benefit being provided, because that is a statewide, uniform benefit.
And, you know, Mr. Knudsen, this is just something that we've been trying to really overcome, and as this goes forward and forward, you know, it's not the battalion chief that's really driving that number on the far right-hand side, it's this broken system.
Yeah.
That's driving that number on the right-hand side.
Yeah, no, I understand. And what we can do is show another column with that pulled out, with the unfunded pulled out. I wanted to point out a couple of other things. As we look at fire captain and firefighter, and we look at the calculated range midpoint, we see that we're below market in pay, and we're at 89 percent. And we're at 89% of the market, and 89% of the market, both for fire captain and firefighter. And that's at the midpoint. So I do want to, I did want to point that out as well.
So a follow-up to the last conversation, at least from my perspective, I'd like to see what the comp cost is of the midpoint and the weighted health cost, and have a total there and a percentage. And then possibly on another sheet, we can look at the, the comp as it relates to the benefit. But I agree with the city manager, that's a blanket benefit across the state that, you know, it just, for my purposes, I don't even really want to look at that, because we're going to deal with that differently.
One question for city manager, on these numbers right here, over the last three years, there's been raises two of those three years. Is that reflected in these numbers?
Yeah, these are, these are current, current numbers, absolutely.
So fiscal year 15, because that's the, it's exactly 59.66 if you look at the retirement benefit of the pay.
As we look at fire overall, again, we have this chart at the bottom, Prescott range midpoint as a percent of overall pay range midpoint. At the midpoint, you're at 92%. And then we've talked about the, the, the health and retirement benefits, and we'll get some new figures for you there. With police, same chart, okay? We're looking at police lieutenant, police sergeant, police officer. Again, the, the overall pay range calculated midpoint, for the lieutenant, you're at 96%. Police sergeant, you're a little bit below market at 93% of the market. And police officer, again, at, at 93 as well. You're going to see on these total retirement benefits, the same kind of issue that we previously Then we have the summary for the police benchmarks. The Prescott range midpoint as a percent of overall pay range midpoint, you're at about 94% of market. And then again, the, the weighted health cost is 93%, and the total retirement benefits is, is showing that, that inflated number. So I wanted to discuss a little bit about what do we do with the other positions? Since the study had about 60 benchmark jobs, how do we kind of bring in the other positions to a new pay plan? What we first do is we recommend grade assignments for the benchmark jobs on the market study findings. So what we do is we try, we look for, we identify the grade that is within 5% of the market average at the midpoint for each benchmark. For the jobs that aren't benchmarks, we, we recommend grade assignments by looking at job families and comparing job content similarities and differences, such as minimum education and experience qualifications, scope and responsibility, scope of responsibilities, supervisory roles, skill requirements, decision-making responsibilities, as well as current grade relationships, okay? And we slot the jobs into an appropriate grade considering these various criteria.
How many jobs or percentage of jobs do we have within our family that we don't have classified appropriately? Do we have a number on that? Or reclassification?
Well, I think you have a total of about 180 classifications. Okay, we did 60 benchmarks. So that leaves about 120 that we would, we would slot.
Does it mean they're inappropriately slotted?
No.
Right. But, but I mean, as, as every year changes, sometimes sort of job descriptions and responsibilities, sometimes they go away, sometimes they're added anew. So I mean, are we going to correct all those as we move forward through this study?
Well, we did some of that in preparation for this. We, there were about, oh, sorry.
We, we did some of that in preparation for this presentation, just looking at the job families. We had eliminated about probably 20 jobs that weren't filled anymore, or they changed, or, or, and, and we added others. Whereas the, in the downturn, a lot of jobs changed. A lot of people are positioned, employees absorbed other duties, so their jobs completely changed.
So the description of the job change too?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thanks.
So what do we see there? I wanted to talk a little bit about police and fire trends. For the custom survey, on the police survey, two out of the 12 peers utilized a step plan for lieutenants, while three out of the 12 peers utilized a step plan for police officer and sergeant. So the majority of the peers are not using a step plan for police positions. That was a trend I just wanted to bring up to your attention. With the custom fire survey, two out of the seven respondents used a step plan for firefighter, fire captain, and battalion chief. So again, that's another trend that we're seeing. Here are some overall recommendations with some very rough numbers. Again, without a dedicated budget, it's difficult to make specific recommendations. Below are some general recommendations and estimated costs. For reinstating the vision benefits, it's been estimated that that would cost about $230,000 to the city. For reinstating full tuition reimbursement, that's figured at about 50 grand as a city cost. Now instituting a pay plan which assigns an amount to each year of service for longevity factor to address compression, but also work with supervisors and directors to, to assess employee skill and experience, to move those below market to, to market, and then merit would, would only apply beyond the market. So what we consider market is the midpoint. The midpoint of the salary range is what we, is what we consider market. So applying a 2%, and this is a 2% per year, yeah, 2% per year would equal about 1.5 million, a very rough estimate from finance. Allocating 3% per year of service up to the midpoint would be about 1.9 million. And allocating about 4%, 4% per year of service would equal about 2.2 million.
So a follow-up question to that. In addressing some of the existing compression issue and experienced employee retention, within your recommendations, how do we address, because we're having a turnover of, of new employees, people that were investing a lot into their training and they're bringing them onboard with the city, and then after a few years, they're gone, because they're finding, once they get two years of experience, they're more marketable somewhere else.
And they're not moving here.
Exactly.
They're moving up, yeah.
Yep.
So typically, what helps that out a lot is a, a movement each year of service up to the midpoint. Now, whether that's 2%, 3%, or 4%, that depends on how much money's available. But having a plan that will move employees up to the midpoint in a given number of years, could be four years, maybe, five years, I've seen some clients have as many as six years. But having a defined, having a definite plan of moving the employee up to the midpoint over a certain number of years will really help address that situation. And then typically, above midpoint is usually based on merit.
Okay.
Because you get to, when you get to midpoint, you're considered at-market, so you want to get your employees up there.
That's an issue that we're facing, not only in public safety, but like our wastewater treatment operators.
Yeah, absolutely.
They come onboard, they get trained, and then they're highly marketable in other communities. And we have spent a ton of money getting them to that point.
Yeah, I mean, recruitment and training and stuff, that's very, very expensive. Yeah, I agree. Establishing new minimum and max range points, so new salary ranges with a 40% range between minimum and maximum. Again, looking at all positions and assigning them within the new pay ranges, using that benchmarking process. And as Mary referred to, there were some positions that were just eliminated from the job families, that were no longer filled or relevant to city service levels. So those have just been removed to the job families.
And to be clear, so that nobody watching in TV land gets this wrong.
Right.
These are positions that we have on our list of positions, they're not currently filled.
That's right.
They're just ones we're not using, don't need to retain them anymore.
These are just titles, not people or, or individuals, that's right, just titles. And then to determine if public safety positions should, should be included in a general employee pay plan, or if you're going to retain your step plan. That's, that's a decision you're going to have to make, too.
In the focus groups and employee surveys, were the police and fire employees asked about a preference between a step plan?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And, and yes, they prefer the step plan. Absolutely.
A follow-up question to that. Looking at other cities that you've studied, within their step plans, I think right now ours is 4%.
Yeah.
Which really ties our hands, we're either doing a step or we're not at 4%. Have you seen municipalities changing that to a lower number, so that based upon their budget, they can either give a step, which might be 1% or two steps in a given period of time?
We have, yeah. And, and also, I would say in general, about 50% of our clients use a step plan for public safety, and about 50% don't.
Okay.
It's kind of, kind of split, 50/50.
But they've, they've moved towards more flexibility in what the step number is.
Oh, yeah.
So that they can actually still use a step plan. Because we've been giving adjustments the last two years, but it's really not a step, it's just an adjustment.
An adjustment, yeah, right, right. That's it. Follow-up questions?
With regard to the step plan, did you look at other communities, how their step plans were structured? How many steps were involved and how long it took?
We did, absolutely. And we have all that data that will, will be in the, in the report.
Great.
We sure do, yep.
Now, the biggest question is where does the money come from?
Yep.
You know, you can't expect to retain quality personnel that are highly skilled at their jobs regardless of what the job skill set is. If you don't pay them, I mean, that's, that's the way the economy works.
Steve?
I agree. I, you know, I, I understand, going back to the 2001 study, when I was first on council, it was such a drastic mess at that time, because the steps had been dilapidated, and you had guys over top of guys, and the fire and the police especially, where you had supervisors that were making less than the on-field police officers.
Yeah.
That's not the way that it worked. That doesn't work that way, until you have the whole department at each other's throat. We need to have a viable and a meaningful way to have step processes that are funded legitimately by some avenue. And that's the question, is what is that avenue? And when we start sitting, talking about money, and we're talking about public safety, retirement, and having to come up with three and $4 million a year in excess of what we normally would have to come up with, we're fishing for money on that end, and we're fishing for money to save the guys that are on the other end. And it's nobody's fault other than a broken system at the state level. But we're the ones sitting up here that have to determine how we're going to do this. And, you know, we put the city manager under a thumb of trying to figure out what jobs eliminate in our families that are no longer beneficial or useful, or how we can draw in our budget. But yet, on the other hand, we need to spend out of our budget to retain these valuable employees. That's a tough task, and we got to figure out how to, how to do that.
Thanks, Steve, I agree. You know, in fact, the matter is, all we ever hear about is cut, cut, cut. Well, you know, you're at a point where you, pretty soon, how happy is this community going to be when you can't keep your cops, you can't keep your firemen, you can't keep the guy that cleans the sewer every day?
Yeah.
You know?
And we got, we have, we have folks here, our employees, listening to this. And they're here for a reason, because they care. And they're employed by the city because we care about having a quality city. So at some point in time, we have to figure out just what it means to this community to have the quality of community people move here for. And we have to find the funding mechanism, so that we can make sure our employees are stable and happy.
Well, you know, it's priorities, that's number one. But then, when you stop and you think about, for example, in the general fund, we, we get two cents. That's what funds our general fund, is two cents, all right? One cent is dedicated for road, and that's going away here quick, down to three-quarter. That leaves, what, 13, 14 million on the other side to fund police and fire. If you look at what that particular budget proposal is, or hopefully, we'll see it here soon. You know, when you stop and think about, police and fire is going to be 16, 17, 18 million dollars, 13 don't cut it. That's just the way that is. And if you don't have the money to retain the personnel, you're not going to retain them.
Well, and the other side is that, as I'm not willing to, as a council person, to send our firefighters and police officers out there half-dressed with trashy equipment and trashy personal gear and everything else. So, you know, there is an other side to that, and it, it all has to do, not necessarily with what we're paying them salary-wise, but what we have to do as a far is having a quality department on both levels. So we need to find out what that money value is and figure out what we're going to do.
Absolutely. I've been asking for it for a while, now we're getting it, and guess what? This isn't a pretty picture for anybody out there.
And a quality city, too. I mean, Parks and Rec is important to the city. I mean, that, that's, adds to our quality of life here. The library, and you know, we skim over the building department, is that not kind of a public safety issue as well? To make sure that the buildings built are, are correct and they follow codes? I mean, it's, it's the entire city. And, and I'm sitting here and I leaned over to Jim and I said, "Looks like all this stuff takes money. We just got to figure out where that money's going to come from."
Mayor, just a follow-up question. What's the next steps related to the information presented today, the updated information, and then taking it into account moving forward?
Let me try to take a stab at that. Mr. Knutson has indicated that a final report will be forthcoming within a few weeks. We are involved in a series of budget workshops leading up to council consideration in June of a budget to adopt. Frankly, we've got a long way to go between today and that budget adoption in June as it relates to various things.
Yep.
We're talking about on the revenue side, potential ballot issues, we're talking on the expenditure side, reviewing all the things that we do and, and cutting out what we can. We've got capital expenditures, some of which we can defer, some of which we absolutely, or life safety, such as breathing apparatus for the fire department and so forth. So, you know, we've got a lot of work to do, and, and considering all of these parameters, inputs, or components of our budget, and obviously, we've said over and over that employees are our most important fundamental resource. If we don't have employees, we can't deliver services. Sure, we can contract for, for some services, but not all services. So I guess what I'm doing is describing a timeframe which extends from the middle of April until late June, during which time we're going to be grappling with these issues, perhaps in more detail at subsequent workshops.
And when do you anticipate that we would see maybe the amended pages 12 through 15, which is on the safety side?
Couple of weeks.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and also, I wanted to follow up to, to the mayor. We will show you what an updated step plan would look like based on market for, for police and fire?
Could you, could you break that to a, from my standpoint, a step as a 2% and a 4% step?
Sure.
So we can see what the different values are between steps?
Yeah.
You know, we get to a certain point, it's minimal, you know, as far as I'm concerned, but when you add it up altogether and put the pennies in a jar, it's a lot of pennies.
Yeah.
So if I could see both levels of the 2% step and a 4% step would be appreciated?
Absolutely.
And Steve, if I could piggyback there, would you mind actually having also do a 1%? Because that, that gives us the greatest flexibility, gives future councils the greatest flexibility.
It shows you what, yeah. It shows you what, yeah.
And I think that's important. And from the employee side, we hear over and over that, okay, sure, it's, you know, 2% is better than 1%, but thank you for 1% rather than no percent. And we've heard that, you know? Our employees are thankful for the increases if they can have some sense of the future, and we've talked about that. The city resuming offering careers rather than having a swinging door of short-time, you know, freelancers, basically.
Well, by going to the 1% step, it gives us the ability to do a 1, 2, 3, or 4 step in a given year, depending on the budget, depending on a lot of the things we have to look at. So it gives us that flexibility.
Well, as long as you're saying that, Charlie, I guess because it's only a spreadsheet, you can go ahead and it would be appreciated to do a 1, 2, 3, and 4.
Okay.
And that way, we can actually see the graduations between the different steps.
What the steps are, yeah. And we'll also show you where they would fit if they were brought into the general employee pay plan. So, you know, what grade they would fit in and what that would look like, as well as an updated pay plan based on the market data.
If you bring in, I guess from my standpoint, if you bring in a, excuse me, a new police officer. Mary, this might be for you. You bring in a new police officer, there's going to be a value and an amount that is associated with a step formula somehow or another. So that when that new police officer is brought in and you have a five-year seasoned employee or a 10-year seasoned police officer, that all of a sudden, this guy that's being brought in as a new police officer out of the academy, his value is not so much higher that it compresses this up here in the middle, and all of a sudden, the steps aren't making up a difference and pretty soon, this guy is bypassing the step.
Yeah. I mean, compression is, when looking at all these things and coming up with costing, how much it would actually cost, you have to look at where you're going to put each employee based on a set of parameters such as years of service. Then you also look at compression. Compression between supervisor and employee and compression between new employees and seasoned employees.
Does anybody out there, as we're talking about, deal with maybe a year of service bonus rather than a year of service step?
Yeah.
Therefore, it's not dragging all the way up the ladder, but yet, you're compensating the employee and telling him, "Thank you for your service to the city." Does that happen very often?
It does. And that's usually done as a lump sum bonus or a lump sum payment. It's not figured into their annual pay, but it's kind of a lump sum annual payment. That's done, yeah.
And the reason why I bring that up is because of the mess that we have in our retirement plan now. When you start tying steps and salaries that continue to go up and those values that we have to pay into the retirement plan, alls we're doing is creating another bad situation at the end. If we can give them a meaningful value for "thank you for working for the city" and a bonus, it doesn't create the bog at the other end as well.
Mm-hmm. Yep, that's done.
Jim? No more. Greg? No sense? Okay. We'll wait for the next step.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Okay. Item 2B.
Item 1B, sales tax options for unfunded liabilities, public safety, streets, and open space.
Mayor and council, this is our third budget workshop in a series. And I think the title is self-explanatory sales tax options, any number of options for what we've been talking about in recent weeks. The unfunded liabilities, meaning public safety, personnel retirement system. There has been mention of public safety, funding, public safety, streets, and open space specifically. We face funding challenges, as we know, in the police and fire public safety personnel retirement system. Currently, 70 million, projected to grow to 165 million. That's the unfunded long-term liability. Second bullet point I'm suggesting to the council, with respect to prior discussion of new revenue for public safety per se, the suggestion is that if the unfunded long-term liabilities issue is resolved or solved, then the general fund will be able to support, not have to cut, the services and levels to which our community is accustomed. So what I mean by that is that instead of adopting a specific, or considering adopting a specific sales tax increment, for example, for "public safety," quote-unquote, if we deal with a PSPRS issue, then we will effectively free up the means, financial means, to deal with public safety and those increasing operational costs in the future.
Okay. Which brings a question, Craig. And some of us have had just very minor conversation about it. The elephant in the room, as you call it, is an obligation and we have to take care of it. We have to pay the bill. But there's also some movement of those numbers, depending on what the state may or may not do in the next few years to change the system. So what we're talking about is paying off yesterday's bills, not tomorrow's bills. Now, if we set up a schedule of whatever that number may be to retire that debt, there will be concern in the public, and rightfully so, of once that debt is retired, and it's a moving number, what happens to this newfound source of money? Does it go away?
Well, that is the suggestion and that is the approach, which was outlined by the finance director last week. And there are various alternatives. Remember, Mr. Woodfield presented a 0.50%, a 0.65%, and a 0.75%. Each of those had an associated duration, a number of years. I'm trying to recall what the 0.75% was. I think it was like in nine years.
Yeah, it was a quick bill.
So if that particular increment was assessed for a nine-year period, then that obligation, Mayor, that you've described, is paid off and at that time, the tax could sunset if that's the way it was set up. It would have been enacted for a particular purpose, the purpose would have been achieved, and that would be over.
Well, but at the same time, what we have to consider along that way is what we're doing to the competitors of our merchant community. And as you know, we'll be having the first conversation tomorrow with our chamber friends. So in order to pay this off sooner, we may shoot ourselves in the foot.
Right.
With raising our sales tax to a point that we're not competitive, not only with our neighboring community, but our friends 90 miles down the road, and particularly in the big ticket items. Yesterday, Charlie and I just played with the number on a $30,000 auto bill. Even the half cent is 180 bucks. So this is somewhere we can't go. So the longer payoff might be more appropriate to remain competitive in the marketplace as opposed, we didn't grow this overnight.
Right.
And I don't expect that we can pay it off overnight. So I think we have, we've got two things to think about, is what does the number really do to us? Because if you do less business as a result of it, you've not accomplished anything.
And you know, Mayor, I got to get this out and then I'll be done with it. But like you said, this didn't happen overnight. What have we been doing? How does a 70 million unfunded liability sneak up on you? You know? And I applaud this council for having the courage to take on this issue because if not, it's going to really hurt the city. But if this was my business, I'd be firing somebody or groups of people for getting us to this point. 70 million unfunded, that doesn't sneak up on you. And when we were going through the fat years, how come we didn't put into this thing so we're not having to deal with it today? And I just had to say that, but I'm done.
Well, that question, Councilwoman Wilcox asked that specific question yesterday. Where did this all come from? And I think we provided that information, for that information to the council, that the 22-year projection, which is the approach of the public safety personnel retirement system, now, the projection is based upon information provided by that retirement system in their most recent phase-in option, which has been altered. The point is that the public safety personnel retirement system has not provided this detailed future annual projection of payments in the past. So we've had a public safety retirement system that's been operating down there, making investments and so forth, sending us what the bill is going to be, but they've never really shown us the big picture. And as we know, and the finance director has pointed out, there are any number of assumptions in the actuariales for what we're discussing here. So there are a lot of variables, there are a lot of things that can change, but we've never been, really been seeing the big picture until very recently with the phase-in. And of course, that stemmed from what's called the Fields case, which was litigated and resulted in effectively a major increase for all employers who have PSPRS employees.
Mayor, I had to coming back, reeling in a little bit. No matter what we decide on whether it be a quarter, half, 60, you know, 0.65, whatever that number is towards the PRSP deficit, I, for one, believe that it should sunset as soon as it's taken care of.
Any other comments at this moment?
I agree.
Okay.
I think it's real important for the whole council and the public to understand that this has been a shifting sands situation. A lot of the responsibility for the problem rests with the state pension board. There's been mismanagement of investments. Those guys get paid huge salaries. They did fire their prior contractor who was doing the actuariales, and that's why we have more accurate data now. So there's a lot more to it. And there was a rolling 25-year unfunded liability calculation that we, you know, in a sense, that was allowing us to kick the can down the road. It's a very complicated thing to explain and it's going to take some time to understand it. But I'm trying to catch up on articles in the Arizona Republic and I find that Prescott is not alone. Every other, almost every other city and county in the state is looking at huge unfunded liabilities and trying to figure out how to pay for them. And unfortunately, we have very few tools to do that. So, you know, we're looking at a sales tax right now.
And in addition to his sunsetting idea, I think we even go further than that. I think maybe it has to be renewed every six years by the voters. If this tax was in, they have to renew it themselves. And I think every single year, there has to be a special city council meeting to update and agree to continue on with this tax and put something in there where if it gets to that point where PSPRS gets reformed, they get that train back on track at the state, that the city council each year could vote to get rid of that tax. And then every six years or so, the voters can either continue on with it or get rid of it. And it puts a check in it and it makes us watch it. By putting something like that into some kind of ballot measure, you ensure that it's watched and now that the heat is off, it doesn't just get kicked down the road for more and more years.
I agree, because it seems like time and time again, a tax just gets comfortable.
Yes.
And dependent upon. And it needs to be examined and the feet under the fire of the future councils and the power of the purse still in the hands of citizens of Prescott.
I think we all agree, but I think we also understand that we're paying debts that are aged now. So if there's any improvement in the system, which I question how soon that'll happen, if you just look at the makeup of the board itself, it doesn't lend itself to a lot of excitement. But the, like I say, I'm more concerned about the amount and what we do to the people that even make it possible for us to pay these bills.
Got you.
And that's the merchants and the community. So I don't want to see us cripple them by trying to pay it off, accelerate the payment. Because this debt is owed and it's not going away. But the future may improve. And that would come out of the general fund in the future. So, Jim?
Yeah, I've got a question, I guess. And I don't remember all the numbers, but thanks, Gene, for your comment. You're right. You know, and I don't have any confidence in the legislature or in the PRSPS fund guys down there to fix this, and I don't trust them not to get us in this jam again. You've got many of the same people down there with this, and they're the same people that are shoveling it behind the doors to protect their own butts. But I guess my question would be, and I understand Marlin's sentiment, being in the retail sector, having to extort taxes out of my clients, you know? But at some point, the citizens of Prescott are going to be held accountable for paying off this debt. And the difference between three-quarter of a cent, 65% of a deal and 50% of a deal was substantial. It was substantial in time and it was substantial in dollars. And I think we would be doing a disservice to the voters, to the residents of the city, if every time we talked about this subject, we didn't bring up what that means. All right? I remember talking about this the last time we sat here, and a quarter of a cent did a little bit of this and a little bit of that, half a cent did a little bit more, and 65% did a little bit more. And the 22 years is based on a number, and a three-quarter of a cent did it in a whole lot shorter period of time. But that whole lot shorter period of time represents money, real money. And it belongs to the taxpayers, it doesn't belong to us. It belongs to taxpayers and it's their money. And I really think that we need to keep hitting at home, and we'll hear from our constituents, do you want to pay it off in nine years? You want to take 17 years, 22 years? You want to take 40 years? We'll hear about it, but here's what it means in dollars.
Jim, and I understand with what you're saying, but on the other hand, if our revenue drops because taxes go up, then we have less money to deal with anyway. So it's kind of, it's a balancing act.
I understand that, Greg.
Mayor? In all this discussion about unfunded liability and debt, and the taxpayers are going to have to pay, I really don't want the finger of blame to be pointed at our public safety personnel, the police officers and the firefighters who put their lives on the line for us. It's not their doing. We value them and we want them to have a good pension system. They deserve it.
And, I'm sorry, but to respond to Gene, I probably spoke to over 50 to 75 people in the past month, month and a half. They all realize this is originating from the state and in no way blame our public safety sector.
And this problem, if we don't address it, it doesn't just affect police and fire, it affects every employee in the city.
Okay. If I might proceed, so we have funding challenges. We've talked at length about the PSPRS issue. I'll just mention our streets, system pavement management, that's a big number as well. If we don't take care of that, we're going to see a growing backlog. The challenge of open space maintenance, which we don't specifically fund now, we have no specific designated funding source, and the emerging challenge of watershed management will compete for increasingly scarce general fund dollars. And then the last item was touched upon by council comments about erosion of the municipal tax base by actions of the legislature. That's just not talk, that's not just a bullet point, that's real. We dodged one this year, which would have taken over a million dollars out of our general fund. That was a proposal to phase out residential rental tax and, you know, what's happening here? And I'll just say, there is something happened here and accentuate that or highlight that on one of the following slides. Councilman Blair, when you were participating, I think it was last meeting by telephone, I think you asked for this particular chart. You know, we've updated the chart for this year. It is unbelievable. And to echo Councilwoman Wilcox's comments, this is not the doing of our public safety personnel. But it is unbelievable that for each of our 53... But it is unbelievable that for each of our 53 firefighting class employees, that is professional firefighters, we are paying an estimated annual average cost per employee of $51,363. That's unbelievable. That's not their take-home pay. That's what we're paying in addition to everything else into this public safety personnel retirement system. And what's even more believable is that it's going to continue to grow. I talked a moment ago about, you know, what revenue options, what means, what financial means does the city have for dealing with general fund expenses, whether they're public safety or whatever? And we're pretty much in a corner. The only thing we really have much control over is the sales and use tax. And that is the only major source of general fund revenue over which the city, through its voters, has control. We do not control intergovernmental revenue, that is what comes back from the state. And sure, we have some licenses and permits and miscellaneous stuff, but the big and primary funding source for the city is local sales tax. We have a 2% tax rate now, and 1% of that is for the general fund. Basically, the soundbite there is, we're running the city's general fund on 1% sales tax, which is well below what many of our peers are doing. It has been stated this morning already, and we will state again, that we can't rely upon state and federal governments to bail us out, to provide the money to deal with our general fund. Many people still do not understand that primary property tax only provides 5% of the general fund revenue, that is, city property tax. That is not to say that when individuals and businesses get their tax bills, that the tax bills are not substantial or significant. What it is to say is that over 80% of the property tax collection on those bills does not go to the city of Prescott, it goes to the school district, the college, and Yavapai County. The city's hands are pretty much tied by state law to only marginally increase on an annual basis, primary property tax, and it only provides about 5% of the general fund revenue today. With respect to streets, the fuel taxes doesn't do the job either. If we didn't have the 1% sales tax for streets and open space, we would have been out of business long ago. We would not have roads, streets that we could drive on. At 2.97 for fiscal year 15, the fuel taxes collected and returned by the state is less than it was 11 years ago, and only 18% of funding our street operations, maintenance, and rehabilitation. So bottom line, sales tax is the only real source the city has to consider to meet these funding challenges.
So basically, 80% of all our street repair, rebuild, patching needs for our streets comes out of the general fund?
Well, 18% of the city's streets and open space budget is supported by field tax. The other 82% comes from our 1% streets and other miscellaneous.
But we have received in the past federal grants, Recovery Act grants and so forth for some of our street.
Pretty minor in terms of Recovery Act, and, you know, there really wasn't much there at the end of the day. That was competitive, and the big jurisdictions did their mega projects of hundreds of millions of dollars, and for rural Arizona, there was very little.
And given the federal budget situation, it's not a source that we can rely on in the future.
Yeah.
But we have to understand too, though, in that HERF fund, it's never going to go up, it's always going to go down based upon the influx of the amount of gallons, miles per gallon that the federal government's making cars get nowadays, electric vehicles, flex vehicles. So the gallons pumped at the pump are less today, and they're going to be less every single year in the future. So we're never going to expect to see a windfall from that tax.
And that's both a, you know, a state and federal issue.
But, you know, to that point, if the state would stop raiding the HERF funds, we might see a little bit more come out of that.
Anything would help.
Right. And also, when we talk about the property tax, some of that from Yavapai County comes to us, but as we saw, I think, two years ago, they stopped the tax on flood control and college or library, and they funded that with contingency. And I think that was going to run out this year. So who knows, as the state puts the screw down on the county, the county might have to put the screw down on somebody else.
Yeah. If we ignore, as a community, the funding challenges, guarantee, we will pay the price, and here is what will happen. We'll unleash the downward spiral that we've been talking about, leading to an inevitable devastating impact on the city finances and in turn, core services and amenities. People will not want to visit here, tourists, people will not want to live here, property values will plummet. This is all predictable. Our ISO, International Standards Organization, rating will be affected, driving property insurance costs higher. Capital needs for public safety, for example, will erode our reserve, our bond rating and debt capacity fall. We illustrated what happens with a series of three charts last week, and what we pointed out last week is, we're using the library in these charts as an example. As I tried to define it, perhaps we ought to be talking about library units than actual libraries, but this is our fiscal year 15 general fund operating budget. It shows the distribution of expenditures in the general fund, and you can see public safety, the respective pension plans, and then everything else. As you move to fiscal year 18, the everything else decreases because we're paying these increasing costs for public safety retirement. And I should say, in terms of library units or library equivalents in fiscal year 18, we will have consumed the operating budget or a operating amount equal to the budget of the library, which means it's gone, as an example. Fiscal year 33, you know, looking out into the future, there's nothing left in terms of the other. It's all public safety and all public safety retirement. And oh, by the way, the public safety services that we used to offer, we don't offer anymore because we would have had to lay off and cut public safety operations, lay off policemen and cut public safety operations in order to pay off this pension liability. So this is not about public safety operations, police and fire being unscathed. This is about the all-encompassing and consuming cost of the retirement system if we don't do something about it, not only on our non-public safety functions, but eventually on public safety itself. Now, there's been a little bit of discussion a moment ago about local sales tax rates and where do we stand? And if the city of Prescott increases sales tax, well, we operate within a market competition. And if there is substantial variation between rates and shoppers have choices, you may see some migration of, you know, sales taxpayers from Prescott to our adjoining municipalities. I think the important thing to also point out here, as I mentioned, that we're basically running the general fund on 1% sales tax plus the state shared revenue. Yavapai Reservation, Yavapai-Prescott Indian Tribe Reservation, they contract with the city for fire and EMS. Chino Valley doesn't provide that service. They, property owners in Chino Valley have a separate item on their tax bill for Central Yavapai Fire District. In Prescott Valley, same thing. They've got 2.33% sales tax, but they also have for each of those property owners an item on their property tax, primary property tax bill, probably $500 in addition to that 2.33%. And of course, we're Prescott, we're at 2%, and we do fund and provide fire and EMS services. So I think there's a conclusion that can be drawn here, that we're at a financial disadvantage with respect to what we provide and the revenue sources that we have to provide.
Question. Really sad question, but, you know, when you start talking about all these different things, city manager, has there been any thought about contracting out our fire services to Central Yavapai One and contracting our police services out to the sheriff's department because we can no longer afford our policemen?
Well, Councilman, those are potential options, but they would do, those really would not do anything about this public safety personnel retirement system unfunded liability. As has been stressed, that's a bill we owe and will continue to owe in any event. If we totally went out of the police and fire business, contracted out, and, you know, I mean, we're not going to not have some kind of police and fire service. That's just not an option. But if we contracted out, we would still have that unfunded liability eating up the general fund like I showed on those three charts. And of course, you know, we may be able to get a contract which reduces the cost, but I think it's fair to say that the level of service and the types of services that Prescott residents enjoy would be diluted. It would not be the same level of service. I can pretty much guarantee, you're not going to see the sheriff's office with three bicycle policeman patrol officers downtown on the plaza. You're just not going to see that.
I strictly only make that point because that's somewhere that I don't care to ever think about going, and this community needs to hear it, and they're hearing it right now if they're watching TV or they're listening, is the fact that we have some very great people in our public safety institutions. Although, when you look at the unfair playing field that you're talking about, if you want to say it's unfair, when you have the city of Prescott Valley and the town of Chino Valley that have their fire services paid for through property tax and being able to have their sales tax where it is there now, if we had that right now, we wouldn't be having this conversation.
Well, I think when, Mark, and correct me if I'm wrong, but this kind of drove it home for me, I think, when you've got a $200,000 home in Central Yavapai, it costs you about 280 bucks a year in property taxes. If we were to raise .75, it would have an average impact in Prescott homes of about 240 bucks just in itself. So on 1% almost is what we run the whole city on, .75 they're getting strictly just for fire. Is that close?
Yeah. On a $200,000 home, I believe the number at Central Yavapai is more like 500?
Oh.
Yeah, $500 a year that they're paying compared to in the city, which is 60 or...
So that would be about...
Yeah, I don't have the number, actual number.
About a 2% increase in sales tax would be about what they're just paying for fire.
Yeah, looking at the numbers that we gave you, yeah, the impact that we had on the sheet last week.
And I'm going to move on to the next slide here.
I just want to make a comment on what you commented on here, because you're putting out a good argument. The quicker you pay this off, the better off this community's going to be, and it's going to stop consuming your entire general fund, year after year after year.
Yeah. Well, and the point I'm going to make, hopefully, which is consistent with what you just said, is that they're actually, you know, among all the bad news, there's actually good news, that we have an idea of how we can address this and how we can address it, you know, the amount of pain, of course, is going to be specific to individuals, but we have something we can do here. If we didn't have something we can do, then it really would be, it would be very difficult. This is the breakdown of total transaction privilege tax or sales tax levied in our area. It's just for reference. So how do we approach this? Well, last week, there was council discussion about some separate or combined ballot measures which might be considered to address these moving parts, these expense-moving parts, public safety, streets, open space, watershed management and so forth. And I hasten to point out that these are only examples. I think they're along the lines of what we've talked about previously, but there are any number of options, separate or combined. Any number of options, meaning whether there is a street sales tax, whether there is an open space increment, whether there is something for public safety liabilities, and the other variable is, okay, how much? So what we've just developed for illustrative purposes are three separate options, and separate meaning one each for unfunded liability streets and open space and watershed management, S1, S2, S3, and then we'll follow that by two combinations that have been discussed. These are, again, for example, only. So let me just go through this first one, and then I won't need to explain the other ones in as much detail. If there was a .65% sales tax to erase specifically, restricted to erasing the retirement system unfunded liabilities, it could appear on the election ballot, general election ballot November 3rd, be effective January 1st, and if it's .65, for the purposes of this example, it would be in place for 12 years, and then it could go away. The use of the revenue, current year, eight and a half million dollars, would be restricted, as has been pointed out by Councilman Lamerson. The percentage of the increment, .65 in this case, does determine what, how much you really pay along the way, or how much less you pay. So this would represent a savings from early reduction of $53 million. So, I mean, this is something which is significant, important, and needs to be taken into consideration. If it was a different percentage increment, or if it was for a different duration, then that would affect what that savings, if any, would be. And so what would this do? Arguably, it would prevent the downward spiral, service cuts, deterioration, falling tourism, lack of economic development, flight of residents and businesses. Enable continuation of the services and amenities presently supported by the general fund. We sustain Prescott's quality of life, timely replacement of public safety vehicles and equipment, maintenance management of public buildings and facilities that we have not even begun to fund, and funding for development of airport public facilities, which relates to economic development. Prescott would continue to grow reasonably and responsibly, property values preserved. We've been through discussion for the sales tax. I won't go through the bullet points, but a similar setup, a tax for a specified number of years, restricted purpose. In this particular case, at 1%, it would result in only a modest increase in the backlog. We basically stabilize our backlog of unfunded pavement maintenance and rehabilitation needs.
Craig, I think it's important that the public realize when we say 1%, we're not suggesting taking 1% to the ballot. Three-quarters of a percent is already there.
On January 1st of 2016, there will be three-quarters of 1% in place. And this is a fairly arbitrary percentage, .08%. That equates to about $1 million, actually a pretty good figure when you start thinking about open space maintenance and acquisition, shifting some general fund expense for recreation services, employees who deal with things like maintaining lakes. Watershed management, the emerging expense requirements that we're only beginning to talk about, and I've also listed that this would be used or applied in coordination with the water fund, which provides funding for Watson and Willa Lake reservoirs and the aquifer protection fee. And this is just your staff's view, not necessarily the only view, but at .08, $1 million a year, we think that that would be a realistic funding level relative to open space maintenance needs, watershed management, and et cetera.
Craig, I know I opened up the door with the streets and open space at 1.25% when I introduced an amendment.
And that is the next slide here.
But I think the .25 originally, as I had proposed it, included that watershed management concept. .08 is not enough for all of that. .08 might be acceptable for open space maintenance and acquisition. .08 might be acceptable for open space maintenance and acquisition, but not to take care of all the lakes and clean up the creeks. There may be other sources of money for that.
Good point, councilwoman, and, and I think the, the point is, is that that would not be the only source. We do, we do have a water fund, Watson and Willa Lake are reservoirs, they serve water purpose, and also the council has adopted a watershed protection or aquifer protection fee which can be changed in the future.
And given the level of distrust in the community about the shifting of the streets and open space tax in the last six, seven years, all the streets, there needs to be some oversight on the expenditures of these open space taxes, similar to what we have with the oversight for our bed tax. We have a tourism advisory commission that reviews those expenditures and makes the recommendations to the council. I think we need that with the open space component of the sales tax.
And certainly, that's a prerogative of the council. And so this is one of two examples for combined sales tax increments. This was effectively the proposal brought forward by Councilwoman Wilcox to enter, enact a combination of 1% streets and .25% open space, and this was a previous and not necessarily the, a current proposal. What a combined sales tax increment or combined increments, plural, would look like is the following, and it has the attributes and the benefits, if you will, that I've already gone over, and if Option C2 would pass, for example, the bottom of our Prescott would be at 2.73%. In that particular scenario, at .65% for the pensions, that would go away after 12 years. So after 12 years, the rate would go back to .2.08%, which is important. I mean, that's the contract, and that's the, you know, that's the commitment that would be made according to this particular scenario. Now, in terms of regional competitiveness, sure, you still have these other sales tax percentages. We don't know what the future will hold for Prescott Valley or the Yavapai Prescott Indian Tribe Reservation. Prescott Valley, of course, does not have a fire department. They rely on Central Yavapai, but they have a police department, they have streets as well. So for all we know, sometime in the future, Prescott Valley may look at their topics like we're looking at and decide that they need to come up with some, some more money for streets or public safety or whatever it is. So, it's a dynamic environment, if you will, among the local communities for sales tax. So what we see on this particular chart may not be what we see next year or five years from now. But I, I think the point is that we need to be reasonably competitive, we should not be way out of whack. Now, I, I do want to point out a change to the ballot question milestones, and this was distributed to council, and, and this is really important. In preparation for today's presentation, we reviewed the timeframes for calling of elections. And what we determined was that for, in order to make the August 25th, 2015 primary election, which will be held because it's a candidate election, but for other than candidate measures, that is a hard date, April 14th, your meeting this afternoon, your voting meeting, if, if the call for election to put that general plan on the ballot for ratification is to occur for the primary election, it has to happen today, April 14th. However, in reviewing the statutes as they relate to other measures, ballot measures, the April 14th date, which is today, is not a hard date for a sales tax measure. The hard date for sales tax measures for the primary election is May 27th. That's when the ballot language is due to county elections. We tell them, we want to hold election, here is the ballot language. So sometime between now and May 27th at a council meeting, if the council would like to call for an election, a special election pertaining to a sales tax measure or measures, then between now and May 27th, the council would have to do that by an ordinance to make August 25th. That is not to say that either the general plan or sales tax measures need to be on the August 25th election. That is the election which has been described in previous conversations because we know it's going to be held. It's a candidate election. There was always a question about whether the November 3rd general election would be required if the candidate, you know, candidate election was, was resolved and settled on August 25th. And what we've said before is that if there was no reason, candidate election reason for a November 3rd election, why would you have that? Because it costs a lot of money to have that. On the other hand, we're talking about potential sales tax measures here which are of extreme importance as they pertain to public safety and streets, in our opinion. So that could conceivably benefit and be, and be a strong justification for taking more time to November, to put those sales tax issues, if any, on the November 3rd election. But that's entirely up to how our conversations go from now and what the council decides. So that concludes our presentation for today.
We've been told that the school district, there will be a ballot of, of some type for the November 3rd regardless. The school district will be doing something, so our cost will not be 100% to, to hold that election. Okay. It's open.
Mayor, if I could just add one thing to those dates, the, the, the argument pamphlets that go out are not, you know, the pro-con books aren't technically required or required by law to be published for a tax increase election. That's why the date can be pushed back from April 14th to 27th. But it becomes sort of a judgment call. If you want that pro-con publication out, then if you wait till May 27, you pretty much pass that time to do that. So that sort of may or may not factor in your decision about timing if you want to get on the August election date. As you get down to May, if you're into May, you're probably too late to have a sufficient time for people to submit pro-con statements and then publish the booklet within the timeframe that you would probably want to have out prior to. And remember, election day, August 25, is basically 30 days after people start voting. So you're looking back at end of July, when people actually start getting ballots, roughly. So it, it may or may not be a factor for you, but it's just a piece of information you may want to consider.
The effective date can be January 1st of 16, though, regardless.
If the, oh, certainly, either on either election day, the effective date of, if a tax increase or increases were to pass, January 1st is a reasonable target date to get it, to implement it.
Steve.
I've got a doctor's appointment, so I'm going to go ahead and say what I think at this point. From my standpoint, there's no, no more that I need to hear, and I want to get this accomplished, hopefully today. There is no doubt that we need the full 1% for roads. So, and there's no doubt that we need the percentage for public safety adjustment. From my standpoint, all these, in my opinion, need to be put on the ballot as singleton items, not run together. The public's smart enough to understand what they want in this community. We've laid out the case why the 1% is necessary, why the public safety adjustment's necessary, and if you want to put the percentage on there for open space, I believe that's the public's will to either vote that up, up or down as well. I'm not, I, I don't need to hear anything else. So I would like to move a foot and say, let's get it done today, and let the public know that this council all knows what's important to this community, and we're going to let them vote on it.
I also like to add on to Steve. I'd like this on the agenda today to make this decision, so no matter what we do, we can get out there and start convincing and, and educating the public on the needs of, of these, these measures.
Yeah, the only agenda item that we have today, that we could vote on today, is the item that was tabled at the last meeting. And correct me if I'm, I'm wrong.
The, because the item on the last agenda was streets, was the streets tax, and that was, that question, particular question was continued to today, you really won't be able to add any other items on to that particular, that particular agenda item. So if you wanted to postpone once again, and this is a decision for later, if you wanted to, again, postpone the decision on streets and have a special meeting in two days for that to put on either single items or whatever, that's, that's doable. All we need is really 24 hours to, and we'd have to just draft, we'd have to draft the separate ordinances if, if that was the direction of the council.
But that item is available today to be voted on.
Streets 1% is available.
But we could amend the ordinance that is on the agenda today.
Well, that item actually failed for lack, you're talking about the 1.25, failed for lack of a second. So the item, the only remaining item left to discuss on that agenda, on that agenda item that was continued today, is the 1% for streets.
But we could, I could introduce another amendment this afternoon.
Well, it did, it did die for lack of a second, so it was, and I'd have to go back and look at the minutes to see what was, what exactly was continued. Certainly, I can say this way, certainly, the 1% is up for debate and, and can be voted on. I have to look at the minutes to see exactly what was continued forward. I suppose in theory, you could offer an amendment to that, but it's not, it's not, because it's continued, it's a little bit different than, than sort of the last meeting agenda item.
And you'll have that information this afternoon.
I'll look at the minutes.
Anyone else?
Well, I would like to comment on the separate ballot issues versus combined ballot issues, and primary versus general election. I think we should put these issues together on the primary ballot and be honest with the voters. This is all, this is the whole package that we need you to consider. Public safety, streets, open space. And I think it's a much better strategy to present it to them as one combined ballot because it's simpler to explain. They're not being hit with three competing ballot measures, three doses of information, three different groups advocating for different things. You get one, one piece of information. If we're going to go around and sell this to community groups and service clubs, we talk about it all at once. It's much more straightforward. Putting it on the primary election gives most, the most voters the opportunity to vote on it, because more people are going to be voting in the primary election than in the general. That's, our experience is that when there are, when there's a contested council election in the primary, we get more people voting. The voting really drops off in the general because the contest is lower. So I really would like us to see, I would like to see us move forward for a primary election with one ballot question combining public safety, streets, and open space.
Yeah, Mayor, I kind of disagree with some of the things that have been set up here. You know, Greg, you're talking about, we need to go out and promote that, and, you know, we need to sell it, and I don't think it's what we want. We, we've seen the facts, and we have to put that out there, and we have to let the citizens of Prescott decide what they want, what kind of community they want to live in. I don't like combining the ballot measures. I think we got into trouble with that the last time with the open space, and we could, we could define that better in the future, where definitely there'd be a split in money. But I think everything has to stand on its own. You know, I, I know the way I would vote as a citizen, as one of 40,000 in the city of Prescott. I think we need to keep the 1% that we're using for streets. You know, if you drive around town, you can see why we need that, and we need to keep doing that, or we know it'll deteriorate. Henry made that very clear, and we'll be falling behind on that. We see the, the unfunded liability on the public safety program pension fund. I think we need to address that. We need to fix that because it is a huge looming problem, and I think if we pay it off in, in 12 years, it saves the city $80 million over the, the long term.
60.
$60 million. I mean, that's, that's a lot of beans. That's two years of running the city in its entirety right now. On the open space, I'm not for doing that right now. I think we have big problems that are looming. We need to concentrate on the, on the basics and what we need to get the city straight. And I hope that whoever comes on board over the next election, they, they carry this on and they have the courage to continue this. It's, it's hard for politicians to say, here's a, here's a sales tax increase. Everyone likes to say, no, no new taxes. Well, I think when you say that, all you're saying is, I'm just willing to work on the courage of the people before me that set up the tax base to begin with. We see the problems out there, we know what we have to do. If we're running the company, I think that those are the things we have to ask for, and we'll be better. We're better in the future for it.
Jim.
I agree sort of with Gene that I'd like to see it all on the August. Where I disagree with Gene is I want them as separate ballot issues, period. I refuse to put police and fire safety in with open space purchases or streets, and vice versa with streets with police and fire. You know, we owe it to the citizens here to distinguish the fact they are three separate issues. They're not the same. And I refuse to believe the voters are dumb. The voters in Prescott are smart people, and they will pick and choose what they want to spend their money on. So that's what I prefer.
Charlie.
Mayor, thank you. The perfect storm is here. I mean, the hurricane is on top of the city of Prescott with this public safety pension deficit, and from my position, the number one top priority is that needs to be addressed. A year from now, the city of Prescott will have to start closing services down if we do nothing. I think the streets are very important, and I think we need to get that done as well. But I will go out and tell every single voter I can meet in person that if we do nothing with this $70 million pension deficit, the city of Prescott will not be the same in 12 months. I'm going to go with the majority on whether these are going to be individual or combined items. I think all three of them have their merits, but my number one concern in these last seven months that I'm here is to make sure we address this pension problem, because without it, it won't matter what else we pass. There won't be a city in 10 years like we know it.
Chris.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mayor, I just want to add just two more things. I think if we do the, the public safety tax, I think we need a dedicated annual review by the city council, with the city council's ability to cancel the tax if need be at that time, and we think things are better. And I think it needs to be renewed by the voters every six years, or at a time specified by the council.
Well, those discussions can be handled about, today's a workshop, but at 3:00 in the voting meeting, we'll be discussing these items again, so.
I'll be with the board at the college at that time.
I'm sorry.
I'll be with the board at the college at that time.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, the workshops, we don't go to the public, yeah.
Mayor, I do have one question leading up to this afternoon. You know, in here, it's talking about .65. I know it's short notice, but I'd like to have finance put together in a couple different increments so that we can understand, because when we start talking about a total tax rate of 2.73, I think to your concern, that really starts pushing us into that upper limit of competitiveness. And so we need to balance that. And I realize that today is streets.
Right.
Specifically. But if we're going to make a decision about moving something forward, or if we're going to give direction to staff, which I think is likely going to happen today, there's going to be direction.
Which would be the short, middle, and long term.
Yep. And I know we have that generally, but I'm thinking somewhere in the mid .5 something in, in there. So .55, .58, and give us .6 if you would.
Get your calculator out, Mark.
.283.
All those things said, we've got about four hours to think about. All those things said, we've got about four hours to think about this, and we'll be coming back. So the meeting's adjourned.